I wonder if everyone could take their seats, please. Thank you so much. Kim, are you still on the line? Kim, Alderman Ray?
Yes, Alderman Ray is on the line. Thank you.
Awesome. Okay, we're just checking in to be sure you're there.
Thank you.
Oh, okay. Gotcha. It's been awhile. Yeah, that's what I'm saying. It's been awhile. Been awhile. Yes, correct. Correct. And actually, let me make sure that I do that. Jeff, when do we make the motion to allow Alderman?
After the roll call.
After roll call. Okay, that's what I would have thought. Okay. We're going to go ahead and call the meeting of the Bloomington City Council to order. Would everyone please stand for a pledge of allegiance? And please remain standing for a moment of silence. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Alderman Mathie.
Here.
Alderman Sage.
Here.
Alderman Malamoy.
Here.
Alderman Burgess.
Here.
Alderman Painter.
Here.
Alderman Schmidt.
Here.
Alderman Black.
Here.
Alderman Harmon.
Here.
Alderman Bray.
Here.
Mayor Renner. Here. Thank you very much. At this point, I wonder if we could have a motion to allow Alderwoman Kim Bray to participate virtually because she is on a business trip? Is there a motion to allow her to participate? Moved by Alderwoman Schmidt. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Black. And we do need to do this by roll call? Okay, Madam Clerk, would you call the roll?
Alderman Mathie.
Yes.
Alderman Sage.
Yes.
Alderman Malamoy.
Yes.
Alderman Burgess.
Yes.
Alderman Painter.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Black.
Yes.
Great. We next move to recognitions and appointments. And we have recognitions presented by the Beautification Committee and Beautification Award for several people. And is there the Chairman of the Beautification Committee who would be coming forward? Robin? Oh, Mbop.
My beautiful assistant, huh?
He's the eye candy. Pardon me? Yes. Okay. And you're ready to go?
Yes.
Can you hear me now? Okay. We're the Citizens Beautification Committee. And every year, we work on the Citizens Beautification Awards. And we ask for nominations from the public and the Aldermen. I know Karen Schmidt is always good at sending us a number of them. And then we put together the list, and we drive around, and we look at all the properties. And when we're looking at the properties, what we're looking for is that place that stands out. It can be residential or business, but usually you can tell there's been some extra effort put into, you know, the house painting, the decoration, the yard, what have you. And those are the ones that usually win an award for us. So then we're going to start with the people who won awards. And I have to do this at the same time, so... Oh, I have to do that?
We've got to get a millennial up here.
Okay, here we go.
Okay, there we go.
Carolyn Butler, 1123 Livingston Street. Hi, ladies. I have an award for you.
Congratulations.
It's heavy. Thanks for the effort you put in. Calhoun Architecture, Gary Calhoun. Jerry and Ann Cunningham. Downtown Murals, Martha Burke and Joan Getzinger. Joan was close to come up. Those murals do add a lot to the downtown. Then we have First Christian Church, Don Hensley. There you are. Come look at them. Don Hendricks, Ethel Hendricks. They're out of town, but this is their home. And then we have, okay, go with me on this one.
Apollinaire Ramos.
Apollo.
Apollo? Apollo? Man, I worked with my daughter on that one.
And I think it flipped ahead. The Wes Jefferson House was, uh, for... Earl Roselli? No?
Emily Callahan? No. Okay. Well, we can collapse.
Robert Wallace. Mario Guzman and Maria Barnes. Janet Martin.
It's a good job. Thank you.
And the last one is Girl Friday on Front Street, and they are not here tonight. It'd be Stacy Johnson. We'd like to thank all of you for putting in your extra effort to make our city look beautiful.
And I'd just like to thank Robin and the entire Beautification Committee for all of their hard work. Thank you so much. Next, we move on to presentation of the City of Bloomington Police Officers. Commission certificate for the following officers who have completed probation. Kenneth Nowatzki, Logan Faustic, Caitlin Stinson, and Brandon Finke. And we're going to have them all come forward and have the oath administered. And I will read their plaques, and we'll go from there. And families, anyone else, relatives, anybody who wants to come, come on up behind us. Make sure that you're in the pictures, please.
I, having been appointed to the office of...
Having been appointed to the office of...
Police Officer.
Police Officer.
In the City of Bloomington.
In the City of Bloomington.
In the County of McLean, aforesaid.
In the County of McLean, aforesaid.
Do somely swear or affirm...
Do some swear.
That I will faithfully discharge the duties of...
That I will faithfully discharge the duties of...
The Office of Police Officer.
The Office of Police Officer.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Okay. I'm going to start with Caitlin Stinson. And from the Police Officers Commission, Caitlin, if you'd come forward. By authority of the Board of Fire and Police Commissioners by the City of Bloomington, in the County of McLean, in the State of Illinois, we do hereby certify that Caitlin B. Stinson, having been duly sworn, was appointed and commissioned as a police officer on the 23rd of May, 2016, and evidence thereof set by our hand and seal, Terry Renner, Mayor. Thank you and congratulations. Thank you so much. Brandon, is it Finke?
Finke.
Okay, thank you. Actually, I met your grandparents. And I needed to be corrected on your pronunciation. Finke?
Yep.
Okay. Police, again, the Police Officers Commissioned by authority of the Board of Fire and Police Commissioners of the City of Bloomington, in the County of McLean and in the State of Illinois, we do hereby certify that Brandon Finke, having been duly sworn, was appointed and commissioned as a police officer on the 4th of April, 2016. As evidence thereof, we have set our hand and seal to the following. And it's Terry Renner, Mayor. Thank you and congratulations. Thank you for all your service, all of you. Kenneth Nowatzki? You're, okay, he's sick? Okay, I'll read his last. But Logan Faustic? Okay. Police Officers Commissioned by the authority of the Board of Fire and Police Commissioners by the City of Bloomington, in the County of McLean and in the State of Illinois, we do hereby certify that Logan M. Faustic, having been duly sworn, was appointed and commissioned as a police officer on April 4th, 2016. As evidence thereof, we have set our hand and seal to the following proclamation. Terry Renner, Mayor. Thank you so much. Thanks for all your care. And just to clarify, Kenneth Nowatzki, you're going to talk a little bit about Kenneth. And he had been appointed on the 4th of April, 2016. And we have a proclamation for him as well. Chief, I'm going to turn it over to you.
Thank you very much, Mayor, Council, citizens. It's always good when we see our officers make it through the programs to be cut loose, to have some freedom to go ahead and continue what they do in serving and protecting our great city. I will read a little bit about each of them, give you a little background. First Officer Caitlin Stinson. She joined BPD May 23rd, 2016. Tonight, her mother, Barbara. Her grandmother, Barbara, and that's not a typo. Her Aunt Judy and friend James are here in support. Kate previously worked for the St. Louis County Police Department for several years before returning to Illinois. She attended Washington High School here in Illinois and graduated from Western Illinois. In her off time, she volunteers for Big Brothers, Big Sisters. She works out a lot and often competes in some of those events you see, the Tough Mudder and other things. And this wasn't on here, but she knows I know that. So, very tough. Glad to have her. Next, Officer Logan Faustic. Hired on April 4th, 2016. His sister Kelsey is here. His fiancee Megan. His mother Laverne are in attendance. Logan was employed by the Lexington County Sheriff's Department as a correctional officer before he joined BPD. He graduated from Eureka College and lists his hobbies as weightlifting, golf, and he enjoys going to the firearms range. That would be Logan Faustic. Officer Brandon Finke, hired April 4th, 2016. His parents Nathan and Christina are here. His brother Brett. His grandparents Charles and Terry are here with him to support him. Prior to joining BPD, he worked with FedEx Ground and graduated from Parkland College. In his free time, he enjoys playing golf and working on his Nissan 350Z, which I just found out there might be a little challenge between he and another one of our officers who has a 350Z, but it will be on a track. As you see, we have all kinds of talented people. We're glad to have them. Officer Nowatzki could not be here tonight. He got sick on his honeymoon. He and his fiancee, he and his wife. So, they couldn't make it. But prior to joining us here, he was Assistant Director of Sports Enhancement at the Sports Enhancement Center here. He attended St. Lawrence High School and graduated from Illinois State University. He currently enjoys rehabbing houses and likes to grill food in his free time. And I will tell you, he's a good personal trainer because he actually trained three of my sons. They turned out all right. So, these are new officers that we have. We're very glad to have them, and they are ready and have been serving and protecting you.
Next, we're going to move to public comment. We have up to 30 minutes for public comment. And since we have one more than the maximum of 10 for three minutes, we would ask you to be as expeditious as possible so that absolutely everybody gets an opportunity to speak. And just to clarify, I do have a mayor's open house. It's usually Friday before Monday council meetings. You can come on over and ask me any questions that you want. We can try to solve your problems individually if possible. And that's from 4:30 to 5:30 on Fridays. Before Thanksgiving, though, we're going to do it on a Wednesday. Just FYI. So, if you want to come in, you've got questions, we'll try to get you answers. If you've got problems, we'll try to get them solved. This is essentially a situation where we do not respond to the county, nor I nor the council responds to public comment. So, again, we are starting at 7:24. We will go for 30 minutes. And I will read these in groups of three. So, if you'd please be prepared to come forward so that we can get all 11 people who have asked to speak this evening to have their say. Starting out with Connie, is it...
Marero.
Marero. And then Robert Valentini and Jim Waldorf, in that order. So, starting out with Connie.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I wanted to discuss the sidewalks. And basically, from downtown all the way to where normal stops. Or starts, I should say. I don't know how many times I have tripped, I have fallen. And you see, I have a walking stick. I usually wore a walker. And there are people, I live at Phoenix Towers. There are many, many people there that like to use the sidewalks, but we can't. They are so bad from downtown even to the Dollar Tree or to the Krogers where we, it's just impossible. We have to go into the grass, or we have to go into the road, and it's not safe. We've had, I know myself personally, I've had a black eye from literally falling and smashing my face because of the sidewalks. It's gotten to the point where, and we have people in wheelchairs, power chairs, that just can't go. They literally have to go right along the edge of the street, and it's not safe. I don't know what can be done about this. I know you're trying to do the crosswalks or the corners on a lot of the things. That's great. Love it. But we need to work on the actual sidewalks themselves, too. I mean, it's gotten to the point, literally, people are getting hurt. And I know my father, I mean, he's not here anymore, but he lived in Woodhill Towers. There were times, like three times that I know of, he had to call the police department or the fire department to get him up off the street because he was going on the sidewalk, had to get off the sidewalk because it was bad. Fell flat in the middle of the street. And he was 500 and some odd pounds and couldn't get back up, so he had to call the fire department to get him back up. But unfortunately, it only happened a few times. But people like myself or like my neighbor, Rob Valentini, I mean, it's getting really bad. I mean, he can tell you more. I mean, he's worked with the Councilwoman Schmidt, so I'm going to...
Okay. Thank you very much. And we'll start the clock over for your three minutes. Okay. Thank you. Mr. Valentini.
Yeah, I...
And then, if I could also say, Rich Beck will come after Jim Waldorf. I'm sorry. Go ahead, sir.
Well, I've been, two weeks ago, I've been working with Karen Schmidt about this. I took over 200 pictures of the sidewalks from basically from Phoenix Towers to Emerson and back down Main Street, all the way down to Front Street, and then back up on Center. And next summer, I'm organizing the first Parkinson's Walk for next summer. First one ever in Bloomington. I've gone to New York five times for theirs. And I've had Parkinson's for over 20 years now. And this has been a dream of mine for over 20 years to do. And so, you know, the thing is, if the sidewalks ain't safe, and, you know, when these people come to visit this, our city, and they see the sidewalks ain't safe or whatever, they're not going to come back. I've got people coming from Wyoming, Alabama, California, Michigan, New York, Texas, coming for this walk. And, you know, they're going to spend money in our hotels, our restaurants, our stores. This is revenue for the city that we all know that we could use. But these sidewalks have got to be addressed. I talked to, you know, several friends of mine, Connie. You know, I have a friend of mine who just got his power chair a week ago, and he's an amputee. And it almost fell.
From the sidewalks?
You know, there's a section in the sidewalk right behind Gaby's Eye Clinic. And Karen Schmidt's seen this too, that is probably, the width of the sidewalk and probably within eight inches across, there's a big gap there. Totally unsafe. I use a walker. I use a power chair. I cannot use a cane anymore because my Parkinson's is at stage five. You know, I have only two ways to get around. And this is it, you know. And I can't get more, any more clearer than that these sidewalks and some of the businesses downtown are not handicapped accessible. And I've been, been by there. One in particular is Garcia's. They have a three-inch gap between the sidewalk and their door. My power chair does not go up there. I boycotted that place for almost a year and a half now. And I told a lot of people about it, too. And that's going to hurt their business and other businesses as well. So, you know, if they can't do, you know, if they can't, they have to, you know, make it accessible for everybody. That's businesses that they're losing. So, I thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Both of you. Appreciate it. Next is Richie Beck, then Angela Scott. Excuse me. I'm sorry. Jim Waldorf. Jim, I apologize, Jim. Richie Beck, and then Angela Scott.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, Councilpeople, Mr. Mayor. I'm here on behalf of the Friends of the BCPA to talk about the BCPA, the possible contract between VenueWorks and the BCPA. I'd like to express my feelings, as well as the feelings of the Friends of the BCPA. And those feelings are that... and, and those feelings are that uh, this is a bad idea. Based on the success that VenueWorks hasn't had at the arena over the past eighteen months, I find it hard to believe that we would seriously consider handing over uh, another venue to them under the circumstances. The BCPA presents a full calendar at the beginning of the, the season and is able to book the entire year ahead of time. VenueWorks has had eighteen months at the, at the arena or Coliseum, and to my knowledge have put on perhaps four shows, other than the, uh, the shows or the, the sporting events from the local resident teams. The last show that they did, a major country star, uh, lost seventy-five thousand dollars. And of the thousand people that attended the show, I understand that a good number of the tickets were given away as opposed to being purchased. I think that's, that shows a serious lack of operational success. I don't understand why we've had all of the delays with getting an executive director rehired, getting a grant writer rehired, getting the open positions at the BCPA refilled, rehired, because it, it, we're getting uh, constant discussion about the deficit, the deficit, the deficit, but the very people, the very positions that would help us eliminate that deficit or control that deficit and be successful have been left empty. And I know that the council resolved, uh, you know, those positions were approved, but while the council is saying, "Go, go, go," somebody's got their foot on the brake because nothing is happening. Uh, we've had an MOU over the remodeling of the Creativity Center in legal for over nine months. We've lost federal funding that we got through grant writing years ago because of our inaction. We need to take a step. We need to get off the dime and, and get those positions filled. But those are things that need to be done under the direction of the city, not under the direction of VenueWorks. I don't see that uh, the mission will be upheld using the VenueWorks proposal. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Okay. Next, Richie Beck, Amy Scott, and Bruce Meeks.
My name is Richie Beck, and I live a few blocks from the BCPA. I believe that giving the management of the BCPA to VenueWorks will prevent people from enjoying something they love and remove the opportunity for students to learn about theater. My family and I have been longtime patrons of the BCPA, and we appreciate the wide variety of performances shown there, many of which were small productions that also include student masterclasses. These masterclasses are not designed to make money, but to teach and give experience to things kids in our area would not otherwise have an opportunity to learn and discover. Many of the masterclasses and theater workshop opportunities will be lost to us if VenueWorks takes over. I've personally taken several masterclasses, and each of them have taught me something I am able to use in my life. One of my favorite class, masterclasses was about fully artists. In the class, I learned what fully artists are, where they work, and the wide variety of materials they use in their job. I have also been a part of the Miller Park Summer Theater and Workshop Experience for several years, and I even interned there two summers ago. The theater workshops are more than just teaching kids acting. It provides an educational experience. The workshop teaches the many aspects of a stage production, including scriptwriting and acting. It also teaches self-confidence and the importance of creating, practicing, and executing a plan. Also, how important teamwork is to accomplish a goal. Losing this would reduce the theater opportunities for both those taking the workshop and those who go see the show. There are people who enjoy theater, but the only show they can see is the Miller Park Summer Theater Show because it is free. After some of those shows, I've had people tell me they love the summer theater production because it's the only show they can afford to see. Giving VenueWorks management of the BCPA would severely reduce the number of opportunities for students to learn more about stage productions and prevent many people who enjoy theater but can, but can't afford it from seeing a stage production. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And now we go to Angela Scott, Bruce Meeks, and Scott Steimerling.
Um, I'm back, as usual. Uh, I sent an email to all of you yesterday. I, I think I called all of you horrible people that voted for the thing. I'd like to apologize, because that really wasn't appropriate. Um, so I apologize for saying that, for saying that you're horrible people because you voted for something that basically is saying, "We don't, we don't like homeless people." And, and that's what it sounded like. Um, not that that wasn't the intention, but it, but that's what it sounded like. And so, I keep saying words are important, and they are. And so, when I send an email that says, "These horrible people," I have to apologize to that because it's not right. And so, when someone comes up and says, "We need to clean up downtown, we need to, um, homelessness is offensive," and I, I talked a little bit about homelessness is offensive. It's offensive for the people that are living in that situation. And it frightens me. And I am here, and I am passionate. It is not because I don't wanna have a new library or because I don't wanna have great things in my city. It is because there are people that you aren't associating with because they're not going to fundraisers, they're not going to the things that you go to. So you, as their representatives, have to go into the communities. They work two jobs often. They're tired. They don't know about politics. They don't understand this mess. I don't understand it. I don't, I don't understand a lot of stuff. I'm learning, and it's a swift curve. But I'm trying to understand, and what's happening is it's causing divide. It's causing me to be a horrible person when I see people that represent us saying things about other human beings are so inhumane, it frightens me. This isn't just at the local level, it's at the state level, it's at the federal level. I mean, if Bloomington can't be a good community, I've lived here my whole life. My great-grandparents lived here, my children live here. We're never gonna move. I talked to a lady from Puerto Rico today, and she was talking about her family didn't wanna come back because that was their home, and that's how I feel about Bloomington. We're not gonna leave. I don't think my kids will ever leave. Our family is here, we are rooted, it is important to us. And I feel like some of you are tearing it apart, and I don't think you're doing it intentionally, but you're not thinking about it. You're not thinking about who you represent. So I, again, am asking you to please, please talk to your constituents, all of them, not just the ones that show up at events, because a lot of times, there are more constituents not at those events than there are there. And that's all. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And thank you for your passion. Uh, at this point, we have Bruce Meeks, Scott Steimerling, and Serena Fish.
Uh, good evening, elected officials. And our new man in town, Deishar. Uh, tonight, I, Mr. Jorgens handed out to you before the meeting very kindly, I proposed petition ordinance, uh, I'm petitioning one person, one little citizen, petitioning that we have a participation ordinance, citizen participation ordinance. Having the three minutes at this microphone is outdated citizen participation approach, and it's not strengthening our local participation like I had hoped, and I think some of others have. But that is all we have in our local legal framework at this time in the 21st century. So I'm seeking to change our legal framework to move us forward, onward, and upward as a community. Jim Fruen said one time, and then he was talking more about the council than the overall communication model. I've not seen this level of communication at such a low level in all my years as a councilman. I think we are at a, we have bottomed out with the way that we are set up now legally. I proposed in, uh, three years ago, the Open Data Ordinance. This ties directly to that. I'm sorry that maybe there's not a majority of you that would agree with that, but I hope you will rethink that now and try to move forward. The vast majority of our public meetings are ran according to a formula that hasn't changed in decades. Officials and experts present, and citizens are given three-minute increments to either ask questions or make comments. There's very little interaction deliberation. As you know, I've suggested that you do that at the committee at the whole level, not at the, at the main council meetings. Our turnout at most public meetings have been low. They have increased a little bit, but they're still low. Our current communications model and our local laws are stifling innovation and discouraging public officials and employees from reaching out at the next level needed with the citizens while failing to achieve what I thought was our intended goals of greater transparency. So we need to change the legal, legal framework. That's why I'm petitioning for this change, for the, along with the Open Data Ordinance, that these two legal frameworks changes go hand in hand as we build a new bridge for what is really next for Bloomington. I've advocated, advocated for almost, what, seven years now for opening transparency. I've met with a lot of resistance, and I don't understand why. So please consider this as you work on the budget. I do have a revenue enhancement that will help pay for this.
Thank you. Uh, Scott Steimerling? Oh, and actually, there, I apologize, there was a, another card. Uh, Oscar, actually, let me go to the names that I have said already. Scott Steimerling, Serena Fish, and um, Oscar...
Urquizzo.
Urquizzo?
Urquizzo.
Urquizzo? Okay, so Scott Steimerling.
Scott Steimerling, Ward Five. I think that by Mayor Renner belittling everyone in public, uh, does not agree, that does not agree with him, is very, very, very disheartening. I'm extremely ashamed of you. You, you claimed that you did not do away with the mayor's open house. You just changed the format on a one-on-one in your office. Was this so that if they did not agree with you, that you did not have a, they didn't embarrass you in public? Uh, I think it's extremely disheartening when you see the city streets the way they are. Uh, the sidewalks is the, as it was just referred to, are absolutely terrible in this town. And I can see where if somebody's in a powerchair or a cane, using a cane, that they could very easily injure themselves. And I would think that the city would wake up and address the infrastructure before they do all this other stuff that really is on the want list or the wish list and not on the need list. Uh, you know, I think it's disheartening to think that the city is absolutely, really could care less about the people. There were, there were people that, uh, there was an individual that was two blocks down that I saw her hike a wheelchair with her granddaughter in it over the, uh, the sidewalk, and everything was to be ADA accessible in 1970. That happens to be over forty years ago. And if we'd be forty years ago, late in forty days, and paying a bill, we'd, we'd have the people either shut the water off or we'd be at a tax sale, you know? You know, and if, also, when you took the leave of absence, that sure wasn't enough of a, a stress that you couldn't teach it Wesley, was it? And, you know, anytime that someone's in public office, they are judged by every word they say. And I know that you may have said you didn't really mean what you said, but you need to think what you say before you say it. Thank you.
Thank you. We're gonna go to Serena Fish, and then Oscar and Mike Kerber. Serena? Oh, I'm sorry. And then last but not least will be Jim Fruen.
Hi.
Hey, Serena.
I'm Serena Fish, and I live at 909 West Wood Street, Ward Six. First of all, again, as being a transplant back to Bloomington after forty-some years in California, I don't think anyone understands how good they have it living in Bloomington, Illinois. There are problems. However, I or any of these people that spoke before me has the opportunity to come up here and speak to everyone that they elected to take care of their problems. Thank you once again for always being there when I've come with something, I've had a problem, or you tell me who to go to. The one thing that I, other thing that I just wanted to talk about tonight, the last time I was here, I talked about the dream big, uh, thing that was going on. According to Siri today, the population, population of Bloomington is approximately seventy-eight thousand people. Online, there was a vote on three concepts for the signage for downtown and using it to bring people into Bloomington. The amount of people that voted were five hundred and sixty-one as of today. The one that was winning had three hundred and six votes. I certainly hope no one's going to make a decision based on less than one per half, almost half of a percent of somebody choosing something. There was no mention on the online of changing the theme, which I had brought forward that I did not like and why. And most people on this council agreed with that, that they didn't like the theme or the tagline. It didn't represent what we were looking for, to get people to downtown, to the core of Bloomington. Also, I'd just like to bring up one of my esteemed colleagues. Where is she? Where'd she go? Anyway, brought to my attention, uh, the colors suggested in the concepts. Red is not a color that should be used for signage. It's a color that's used for emergencies and high, you wanna see it, you can't, and it was stop signs, and when you have all your signage in red and white, you lose the concept of the stop sign.
I'm gonna have to ask you to...
Okay.
...wrap up, Serena.
All right.
Your time's up.
Anyway, thank you for letting me be a part of this city once again. I think it's wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you, Serena. Oscar, Mike Kerber, and Jim Fruen.
Hi, my name is Oscar Urquizzo. I've been part of the Miller Park Summer Theater Program for eleven years, and I'm here to talk about the BCPA and VenueWorks Management Agreement that's gonna be made today. So, the BCPA has helped develop a summer theater program where we have an intensive camp during the day. And in these day camps, we, um, we learn at the BCPA how to manage the light board, the soundboard, and we all learn how to do all the other ropes behind the stage, literally and figuratively. But um, I just wanna say that it is a pleasure to work with professionals who know what they're doing and learn from them. Although I am highly involved in the summer theater program, it isn't the only interactions that I have with the BCPA. So I've gone to organize rallies there, local fundraisers, and different events that brought local artists on stage. And not only has it helped my sister and my brother and I learn how to, you know, express ourselves in the performing arts, but it also helped my family's small local business grow. We are a mobile food business, a food truck. And I feel that like, um, a corporation that's not in Bloomington shouldn't be managing a local level institution. I can see that they might, you know, oversee us and other local food trucks that park there as well, and that's affecting local commerce. I fear that VenueWorks doesn't understand what issues we have in our community, the significance that our community has, and what Bloomington stands for. The best group of people to run such a historically rich institution are the people who currently manage the BCPA. It recently has become a reality to me that I won't be living in Bloomington next year due to going away to school, and I really hope that you guys vote in favor of the management of the BCPA, just because I want other children to have the same opportunities that I have or have had. And so, just some... And so, just something that I wanted to leave with you guys is, in this photo, I have my family at the VCPA around 2012, and this photo is the family that I have made at the VCPA. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mike Kerber and Jim Fruen.
Mayor, council members, thanks for the VCPA, all of you that were responsible for it. I would like to advocate for getting another director like Tina. Y'all remember Tina Salamoni? What a great job she did. You know, the mission of the VCPA is to bring in a variety of entertainment, and she did a wonderful job of that. She would go out in the community, she'd find all kinds of entertainment for all ages, you know, from kids to geezers like myself, for all ethnic groups. And when one wasn't successful, she'd go out and find out what people wanted to see. That's what we need, not Venue Works, whose mission will be to collect the fees for the management and the owners. So, I would advocate we get another Tina in. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Jim Fruen. Familiar face, welcome, Jim, former Alderman. And you did promise that you were coming back for public comment, as I recall.
Mayor, I'm trying. You know what I mean. Good evening to everybody, and Kim Bray, I hear a lot of good things about Kim Bray, so, anyway. This is a smorgasbord, so stay with me. But good evening to all, and yes, I am still going through the withdrawal therapy, but making progress. I still respect the decision we made to place, glasses, the decision made to place term limits on our boards and commissions, and my personal decision to honor the spirit of our voting action. But what I am not able to let go of is the passion I have to see Bloomington become a greater regional player with our community partners. Chair, I'll give you and the council a copy of my notes and the associated handouts, and ask that you make it a part of the council proceedings. My message tonight to the council is that there is no better time than now to agree on three low-cost initiatives that I've always tried to promote in the past. These are a signed code of conduct, a signed principles of partnership, and three, a willingness to meet with the town of Normal to explore a shared sales tax agreement. You might ask, what prompts my message tonight? And my answer is simply to look at the media stories of the past two weeks. Given my time constraint, I will use very quick sound bites, but you will quickly understand how they individually and collectively contribute to these three initiatives. So, here goes, last couple of weeks. ARC user fees hails criticism of the council. The current status of being an advantage. Outback Steakhouse. KBL Retail. Sexual harassment, racial bias, and the list goes on. These stories, in their own way, contribute to the need for the council to make a statement of responsibility and commitment to personal behavior and a business responsibility for the greater good of regional programs. With this note, I am including summary documents on each of these three opportunities. None of these require staff resources, consultants, committees, or a task force. What they need are individual written commitments from each elected official. Putting your name on the paper helps to hold oneself more accountable. With all respect, it's a matter of accepting the dysfunction and divide that exists among some of the council members. It's about moving away from the personal agendas and voting cliques that exist today. Moving forward, we need every individual supporting one another with the good of the group taking precedence over oneself. We can no longer manage the city building by building, block by block, neighborhood by neighborhood, ward by ward. Our larger McLean County and regional initiatives need everyone pulling together more than ever before. With these three action items, you are in the position to make a difference with our many community partners. You can make each of these initiatives happen, thank you, one second, happen this month. Yes, at your November 27 meeting. Do it for the city and the entire central Illinois region. There is no reason to committee it. Good luck, and thank you for your service. I know you don't get told that very often, but it is a difficult task you have, and you've got a lot on your plate. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jim. Okay. Oh, yes, and our Mayor Protem has reminded me, we do need to recognize appointments to Historic Preservation Committee. Georgine Chisel, I saw somewhere.
She had to leave.
Okay. And Paul Sharnet. Paul, are you here? Okay, thank you very much for a willingness to serve. Thank you very much. Appreciate that. Okay, at this point, we move on to our consent agenda. Are there any items that anyone would like to have removed from the consent agenda for a separate discussion? Seeing on, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented? Moved by Alderman Black. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderwoman Painter. Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor, please vote aye.
Come on, yeah.
And are you an aye on that, Alderman Bray?
Alderman Bray votes aye.
Okay, thank you. And so, when we consider in Alderman Bray's aye, we have a nine to zero vote, there are no nays to announce, Madam Clerk. Thank you very much. We're going to move right along now to our first item under our regular agenda. Item 8A, consideration of an amendment to extend the performance, excuse me, the professional management services of Venue Works to the VCPA, and...
Mayor?
Yes.
I'm sorry. The addendum item, which was 7L, that was added to the agenda, you would need to take a motion on that as well.
Oh, I'm sorry. I have 7L. Someone have...
Historic Preservation Committee. Four more.
Oh, I'm sorry, that's true. I asked the people to stand, but not, I apologize. Can we have a separate vote to approve the two appointments to the Historic Preservation Committee that are not listed on the consent agenda?
It's moved.
Thank you. Moved by Alderwoman Schmidt. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderwoman Painter. Any discussion? Seeing on, please go ahead and vote aye on the two appointments to Historic Preservation. Thank you so much. Alderwoman Bray, are you okay on that one?
Alderman Bray votes aye.
Aye or nay?
Votes aye.
Aye.
Aye, please.
The motion carries nine to zero, there are no nays to announce, Madam Clerk. All right. Now, we move on to item 8A, and Ms. Cannon, if you would come forward, appreciate that this is consideration of the amendment to the VCPA contract. And you have five minutes, and then we have approximately a 10-minute council discussion on this. If need be, we could conceivably extend that discussion. Go ahead.
Thank you very much. Thank you for your time and attention. I am just going to quickly recap the presentation that Venue Works Presidency Peters presented to you about a month ago here in the council chambers. And we will start at the beginning, just looking at some new revenue opportunities that we believe we will be able to provide in bringing the VCPA revenues up to speed with some food and beverage sales opportunities, new ones that don't exist currently at the VCPA, introducing some premium services and some seating opportunities, including some unique ticket packages and VIP opportunities for people who will come to the shows. Our ticketing contract with Ticketmaster provides us with a great email database of over 409,000 people in central Illinois who receive a weekly email that would be able to be utilized for the VCPA shows in order to provide more marketing opportunities for the VCPA to sell tickets, making sure all the ticketing software and equipment are PCI compliant, the online and mobile ticketing, purchasing, and scanning capabilities that currently are not being utilized at the VCPA. These are all opportunities for new revenue and new ease of use by the consumers. For cost effectiveness, I know we talk a lot about the labor costs and the opportunity to share some of those costs between the two entertainment facilities, the arena and the VCPA. But all of those opportunities include, you know, right on down to purchasing, I mean, things that we would do that would be able to be utilized over both buildings, and, you know, everything from large goods to right down to toilet paper. So, anything that you could think of that we could buy in bigger quantities at a lower cost would be an opportunity as well. Our reduced contract expenses for ticketing, using just the ticketing agreement that's currently in place, the VCPA pays a $2,500 annual license fee and a $4,000 annual support fee for the ticketing company that is currently in place. Ticketmaster does not charge that through our Venue Works contract, and there would be no setup fees for Ticketmaster to put equipment into the VCPA. And then using the booking advantages, making sure that we use that network of theaters, getting the best financial terms and routing for shows that would be coming through central Illinois and the Midwest. Finally, the experience in theater operations. Steve Peters owns and operates the Venue Works theatricals. We have a national contract with Live Nation, one of the world's largest and premier entertainment promoters. And again, the network of theaters throughout our Midwest area, including several cities in which Venue Works manages performing arts centers and arenas with separate banking accounts, separate budgets, separate financials. So, those are the bullet points of the things that we discussed earlier. The contract amendment would match the length of the term with the current contract at the arena. The below-market monthly rate is management fee just because of the existing operation locally, and our full financial transparency that we would provide. I would ask if there were any questions.
Okay. Questions from the council? Actually, I wonder if I could start out with one. Is there any way that, rather than taking this contract as a whole, we could use some of those advantages and just do pieces of this contract? Like maybe contracting with you to help us with booking, or help and give you some sort of percentage?
Co-promote shows at the VCPA?
Correct.
I'm sure that we would be able to look at a co-promotion for specific shows that we'd be able to utilize.
So, in other words, if the management would stay with VCPA, but the promotion and the ticket sales, we tried to work with you on?
Well, I believe that the Ticketmaster contract that Venue Works currently has is only for buildings in which they have a management contract. If you're looking for Venue Works corporate to co-promote a show with the city over at the VCPA, that would be a different contractual arrangement.
Correct.
That would be simply for that particular show.
Okay, thank you. Questions? Alderman Sage?
Thank you. And Lynn, thanks for your presentation. I will tell you that, well, let me ask you this. Something we hear repeatedly, over and over, is this idea that there is concern about the performance of Venue Works related to the arena and how that might or would apply to the VCPA. And I'm wondering if you have any thoughts that you could share with us about that?
Sure. So, in one respect, if you look back at the first full year of Venue Works management, which was not actually an entire full year if you count from April 1st to May, or, sorry, May 1st to April 30th of last year, we did book 13 events outside of the sports events that were previously booked. So, there were 13 other events that took place during that fiscal year. This year, we're already at seven events that we've booked, and we're looking at adding and announcing a couple of more in the very near future. So, we're up to nine, and we still have six more months to go before the end of this fiscal year. So, I think we're growing in our business as far as booking events at the arena. Well, if you look at the VCPA, there is a season. There should always be a season, and there should always be local events. This is not something that we are looking to change. What we're looking to do is to add additional opportunities through using that network of theaters and the opportunities to be able to book more events that, we have a lot of dark nights in both buildings, and not every show can play at the arena, but there are a lot of shows that can play at the VCPA. And using our network of opportunity, we should be able to fill some of those nights. It is simply not going to take anything away from what's currently happening at the VCPA. We're looking to add and make more money there.
So, not coming in and kind of completely wiping the slate clean of what's going on currently at the VCPA?
Our contract is at your direction. We simply would work under your direction, and whatever your direction is to us, we're here to serve.
True. And I think, and let me say, I appreciate the fact that you've come forward with a proposal to reduce the deficit at the VCPA for approximately $200,000 annually. And I will tell you, I've been here long enough to see, I've seen the VCPA fully staffed with all the positions full and still significant deficits every year. And so, I appreciate that at least you're trying to come to the table. The reality is for this council is, is we have a coming structural deficit, and here's an opportunity to make some progress on reducing that by approximately $200,000. The decisions will not get any easier for the council. And the lobbies, the groups of people that come out and lobby for their particular programs will not be any less, you know, enthusiastic in their lobbying. So, my point is that, again, it's important for this council to remember that we have a structural deficit coming. There are nothing left but hard decisions now. We've had opportunities in the past to start to address some of those. We chose not to, and so now the decisions get tougher, and so at least I appreciate the fact that Venue Works is trying to come and offer some type of a solution. So, thank you.
And on the heels of what Alderman Sage has said, we do recognize you inherited a hell of a mess. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Other comments, questions? Alderwoman Schmidt?
Just a general comment, I think, kind of feeding off what Alderman Sage is talking about, I think we have asked a lot of really good questions with this, and I'm glad we went through this process. I appreciate that very much. Personally, I don't think that this is the answer, but I see a lot of really good ideas that have come out of this that I hope that we pursue. I think that in a close reading of some of the material that Jay Tetsloff provided for us, I think some of the deficit that we see has been because they haven't necessarily had the tools in hand to do the work that they needed to do. And some of those are IT-related, not our IT staff, but the opportunity for using computer systems in a different way. And, you know, I think it was called out the lack of hiring of someone who can do a lot of the fundraising, because we had a lot of traction with that. I am not going to be voting in favor of this, but I did want to say how much I appreciate all the effort that went into this, and I think it's really provided us with some great ideas to move forward.
Thank you very much. Any other comments? Okay, at this point, unless there are any other comments, we will vote on...
We don't have a motion.
Oh, excuse me, we don't have a motion. Do we have a motion? Thank you for keeping me honest, Alderwoman Schmidt. Is there a motion to, either way, to approve or to disapprove?
I will make a motion that we do not approve this contract with Venue Works.
Is there a second? Second by Alderman Milowambway. At this point then, we are voting for the motion to disapprove. An aye is against the motion as present, excuse me, against the proposal, not against the motion. And Alderwoman Bray?
Alderwoman Bray votes aye in favor of Councilwoman Schmidt's motion.
Thank you very much, clarifying that for all of us. The motion carries nine to zero, there are no nays to announce, Madam Clerk. Thank you very much, Ms. Cannon. Okay, we move right along to our next item, which I'm afraid is liable to take, no, it is extensive, extensive discussion on this.
Violent even.
Perhaps violent even. Who was violent? I don't think I've heard you say that before, Alderman Milowambway. Item 8B is consideration of adopting a resolution designating Alderwoman Diana Howman as the official voting delegate for the City of Bloomington at the National League of Cities Annual Business Meeting. The discussion that I had had with interim city manager Steve Rasmussen on this was, some of us have been to the National League of Cities most of the times. I've been to the National League of Cities, have been before, I've been mayor, I've been with Alderman Milowambway and Alderman Scott Black. We're, anyway, but the most consistent attender of these meetings has been Alderwoman Howman. They're becoming increasingly aggressive at the national level, especially on policy issues related to intergovernmental agreements. This is beyond just Illinois, this is at the national level. There are some concerns about removing state and local tax exemptions in tax policy. There are any number of concerns about not funding infrastructure despite what we have been promised. These are the same kinds of themes, excuse me, that you would hear at the U.S. Conference of Mayors. And regardless of... And regardless of party, mayors are getting more aggressive and nervous about what's happening in our state capitals and what's happening at the national level, and the National League of Cities is equally as concerned. And they are asking us for a representative, and it seemed as if Alderwoman Howman was a logical choice. I am going to look to Alderman Scott Black. You have your light on.
I do, thank you. I just want to ask this question, just mostly for the public, is the things that you're voting on policy-wise, are they going to get run by this council first?
I checked online today to see the agenda for their annual meeting, which is Saturday afternoon, and it has not been posted yet, because my intention was to share that with all of you to get some input on that. So if I get a hold of the agenda before Saturday afternoon, I would be going ahead to run the items by each of you.
Usually those are, and they haven't been, Steve, you haven't seen any of that in the administration pack. Okay, usually those happen well in advance of the meetings so that you can do precisely that touch base with your council, touch base with the mayor, touch base with the citizens as you go forward. Mostly, they're non-controversial from the standpoint of cities. They may be controversial nationally, but the main concern of, National League of Cities is composed of mayors, although mostly they tend to be smaller to mid-sized city mayors, and lots of council members. I think, is that a fair assessment?
And some staff.
And some staff from throughout the country. And that, they're concerned about having states and the federal government balance their budgets on the backs of local governments. And so those are some of the aggressive points. I'm sorry, Alderman Black?
Yeah, and there's no doubt that there's uncertainty across, you know, state and local and federal government at this point in time. I guess, I'm more interested in, you know, if you're going to sign off on the City of Bloomington, at least you'd want to have some say or view of whatever we're talking about before it goes out there, because I don't want to get a constituent calling me, why did you support this through the City of Bloomington? And I don't know what they're talking about, and then, you know, I think that's not the best. So I wonder if by ordinance, maybe, you know, a summary of the items to be voted on gets presented prior to these meetings?
It's this coming Saturday, and you don't always know whether there's an amendment to an amendment to an amendment to an amendment. I mean, these are elected officials. These are, this council tends to be fairly restrained in adding amendments. That's very unusual. We don't know, we, in this case, once Diana gets, assuming this is approved, once Diana gets the issues, she can hear from us in terms of what we think her line of argument ought to be, or the votes that she should cast ought to be, as we're going forward. One of the things that I can tell you that is always discussed at the U.S. Conference of Mayors, and I guarantee you will be discussed at the National League of Cities, is going to be the Marketplace Fairness Act. This did pass the House, it got stalled in the Senate, and that is so we do not have continuing eroding sales taxes. I doubt there's a higher priority in legislative priorities than that particular one. So when you click on Amazon.com, you don't get to avoid the sales tax that you'd pay if you went to Barnes &amp; Noble. I think that's a safe way to put it. Again, Alderman Black, did you have a follow? Okay. All right. And it does not legally bind us to anything. It just says, we want a representative. There are times, I didn't bring this up with Alderwoman Howman, there are times where a representative of the city, you know, may take a controversial position that there are some people in the community that don't like. We, you know, we know that those things are liable to happen, but this does not legally bind us to anything. City manager?
Thank you, Mayor. I was just going to say, I'll put the staff to work on it, and we'll see if we can't get that agenda for you right away.
Thank you so much. Appreciate that. Anything else? Is there a motion to approve Diana Howman as our representative to the NLC this weekend?
I'll make that motion, Mayor.
Moved by Alderwoman Schmidt. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderwoman Burgess. Any further discussion? Seeing none? Alderwoman Bray?
Alderwoman Bray votes aye.
Aye, okay. And just for the record, the motion passes eight to zero. There are no nays to announce. Alderwoman Howman recused herself from voting for herself. Not required, but appreciated. Thank you so much, and congratulations. I'm sure you'll do a great job. All right, we move next to items. We're going to consider items C and D together, is that correct? And you're going to have a joint presentation, we chatted with about this, and so that, in order to handle this as expeditiously as possible. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. We're hopeful for a peaceful and quick discussion on sewers. This, what should be normally a very benign contracts, so normally these would not be taken to you, but we thought it was best because of the sewer actions taken by our council, we wanted to give you updates on where we are as a staff, and then also what we're looking at in the future. So with that being said, what we're trying to do tonight is pass a contract for both CCTV, which this is basically televising and rating sewers, and then also lining. We are continuing this year, what we wanted to do is, from a high level, give you the reminder that these contracts are still smaller contracts. The rate increases, though, we really wanted to make sure we got ahead of our infrastructure issues with sewers. Those do not begin until May 1st of 2018. So the contracts you see before you will be done and completed before May 1st of 2018. We're working with our finance department to try to front-load next year's contracts, to try to be aggressive with that. So we wanted to make sure we let both yourselves and our public know what we're looking to do. We still, with our CCTV contract, are ahead of next year's construction work, just right on point. So we're not well ahead, we're not really getting, being proactive, we're just barely keeping up with the construction, but that's still good and best practice, you need to hear that. What we're looking at doing is, we still review all of our sewer repair, all of our sewer lines. When we know we're doing work, we prioritize those areas. When we see issues, we prioritize those areas. We look to assess the overall pipe. You can see some issues on the screen. Both this and the next slide really identify, these are real life in the City of Bloomington. A lot of times, you'll see up on the screen when you have sewer laterals punching through some of the mains, those cause blockages, those cause issues. We also have had problems with utility companies that bore through some of our lines. A lot of those issues, that's what we're looking for. We're looking for those issues ahead of time so we can line them. Moving on to our sewer rehabilitation, that's something I'd like to point out with you, to you, is, once we televise, you know that we look to do point repairs and we line. But the key for what we're looking to do is, we're being proactive this year. Our staff has been to some national conferences to try to find what are the best practices. We've had to, we're trying some things, some pilot things this year, trying to look at some additional chemical grouting, some additional types of lining, some additional ways to look for improved quality. We've found out what's not working in other communities, how can we be proactive in keeping that from happening? We haven't been having failed liners, but some communities do, so I'll give credit to our staff. You'll notice there are multiple alternative bids this year that's different than in past years. We're trying to get ahead of it this year as opposed to waiting for things to fail. We're trying some new things so that we can try to utilize newer technology. This is, you know, we're trying to not be too far ahead. We don't want to be on the bleeding edge of technology. We want to try to be what is actually working and what can be used. So we're trying to keep up with that from that standpoint. So again, you've been familiar with our process, you've seen videos on how we do sewer lining. You also know the benefits of being proactive with that, the cost-effectiveness of it. And so what I do want to tell you is that, starting next year as well, I guess before I even go to this year, starting next year, we're looking at significantly increasing, I just want to say that for you. May 1st of 2018, we're looking at at least doubling our televising, and then we're also looking at quadrupling some of our relining program. And that is going to be some of the cornerstone of our sewer maintenance contract in the next few years. We have to get our sewers assessed so that we know where we need to point the fire extinguisher. Instead of being reactive, we want to be proactive with our system. So that's what you're going to see over the next two to four years, really our staff trying to get ahead of the problems instead of being responsive. So that's what you're going to see over the next few years, we just want to point that out to you. Again, this year, what you're seeing is we are looking at lining about 21,000 feet of pipe. Over the last few years, we have lined 12 miles of pipe. And so what, again, that sounds great. 12 miles seems like a wonderful thing, but out of 335 miles of sewer, that's not enough. And so once again, thank you for taking action as a council for us to be able to be responsible in good sewers or our infrastructure. I think that's important for us to thank you for that. So in highlighting the two different contracts that we have, both the televising, we got some great pricing. Again, I'll give credit to our staff. We got great pricing because we work with the contractor actively, give them maps, we go out to sites. You get better pricing from contractors when you help provide them with good expectations and customer service even on their end. So the good pricing allows us to be able to maximize the work we get done. With that being said, we're under our time limit, and any questions that you have?
Wow, you came in under budget!
12 seconds to spare.
Well, but that's only, you have another half.
Oh.
Right. Questions of Mr. Karch? Okay, you want to continue with the second bid?
This is it. We summarized it together in one.
You just, you put in bids 19 and 20.
We did. We put together both items, both regular agenda items for your action. After you take action on one, we would ask you to go ahead and take action on the second one unless you have discussion and questions appropriately.
So it's not a single motion?
It is still not a single motion. We're asking for you to take action on first 8C and then AD. So please, if you can do that as a council, that would be great.
Okay. And then we just also want to make clear then that you came in under 50% of the time budget.
Again, this is a good item. This is a regular item, we wanted to give you some updates. Thank you.
Let me start to ask if there is a, to begin discussion, is there a motion to approve item two, essentially city bid number 218-19? So moved. Moved by Alderman Mathie. Is there a second to that motion?
A second.
Second by Alderwoman Schmidt. Questions? Comments? Do it. Alderwoman Bray? What's your vote?
Alderwoman Bray votes aye.
Aye, okay. It was nail-biting, but we made it nine to zero. There are no nays to announce, Madam Clerk. Okay? We move on to the second item, city bid 2018-20. Is there a motion to approve that as presented? So moved. Moved by Alderman Mathie. Second by Alderwoman Schmidt. Sounds like a pattern here. Any further discussion? Alderwoman Bray, how do you vote on that?
I vote aye.
Okay. Then that, once again, means we have a unanimous vote, nine to zero. There are no nays to announce, Madam Clerk. And we go to city manager's discussion.
And I have nothing for the council this time, thank you.
Okay. Wow, you're trying to increase your poll ratings. Okay. The main thing I would, actually, I don't think I have anything either. Alderman discussion. Alderman Mathie, and, well, we'll just go from, in order of ward, start off with Alderman.
So my only thing is, I just wanted to say thank you to our interim city manager. He participated in a Veterans Day dinner last week that I was not able to make, but everybody I talked to said it went off phenomenal. You were part of that planning committee for that, so thank you for your good work on that.
Thank you very much. And I appreciate everybody who supported that as well.
Alderman Sage?
Thank you. Steve, I just, a point of inquiry, we have an automatic request form that I think was submitted last week, or last month, I'm sorry. And it's been now pushed a couple of times, and so I wanted to talk about the, kind of the logistics of that going forward and find out, or I guess confirm if, I guess a two-part question is, will this be on, will that be on the agenda next week for the committee of the whole meeting right now?
Yes, right now, unless the council tells me otherwise. My plan is to put that on the agenda for the committee of the whole.
Okay. And then, as has been our practice, then we usually review possible changes in one meeting and then vote on them at the next meeting. Have we set up a placeholder or someplace on the agenda for the 27th then to vote on that matter?
I think, I think I can answer that question, no, because it's a very complicated issue. It's much, it's a structural change. And just to clarify, this is an, for the audience, it is an informal procedure of putting items on the agenda. According to the ordinance, Mr. Jurgens, correct me if I'm wrong or if I missed something, that can be either the mayor or the city manager. The, we have an automatic request form to put items on the agenda. That is an informal, non-ordinance-related process. We've generally, you know, we've used that. Sometimes it's taken as long as six months to put something on the agenda once it was requested. It depends upon the nature of the request. It depends upon the nature of our schedule. The time of six months was not obviously just scheduling, that was the metro zone. So it is, the only time that we put it on immediately was the procurement request. We had time, and it was time of the essence. This one, I certainly have spoken to previous mayors of Bloomington and others. This is potentially a structural change that does require, I think, a little bit more information. We do need more than just a legal opinion, and if there is more, I think the first time there was no information. It was, I wasn't even sure what the proposal was, that's why I think it went back the first time. The second time, I think I understand what the proposal is, but it certainly does require, it seems to me, some additional staff and other information for us to present for next week so that we understand the nature of what we're voting on, or considering, shouldn't say voting on, beginning to consider. And then we can, we will certainly need more than one week to change a structure that began one generation ago. So whether that's December or early January, it'll be as expeditious as possible. We do have other things that are going on too, that, like a budget, that I think is, you know, budget, tax levy, other things that are important as well.
Do I still have the floor?
If you want the floor.
Okay, thank you. So then I will reserve the right on the committee of the whole meeting then next week to ask to have that put on the agenda for the 27th. We have an automatic request form that has been signed by six Aldermen.
Correct.
And so it will be time to move that forward. So again, we can have the conversation next week, and I will reserve the right then to ask for perhaps a council vote on putting that on the agenda for the following week. So thank you, Steve.
Okay. Well, anyway, okay. Alderman Milowambe?
Okay, I don't know where to go afterwards.
It doesn't have to be on that.
Okay. I was going to speak about something totally different, but on Saturday, many of us participated at the Veterans Day recognition of veterans in McLean County, and I just wanted to say it was quite an honor. And, you know, although it's always bittersweet, but it was nevertheless just a, just a good moment to be together with, you know, veterans. I got a handmade scarf made by a veteran, you know, just, you know. I think it was someone from the McLean County Museum of History, right? Okay, who handed it to me, and that was really nice. Really felt really nice, so, just a good day all around. Thank you. Just trying to finish on a positive note.
Finish, and I want to thank you for that. Actually, it's the first one since I've been mayor that I missed, and it was, happened to be the first time that Illinois Wesleyan had an open house on Veterans Day, and I had took a pass for five years. So it was kind of my turn to do it, and so that's why, and it was exactly at 11 o'clock, the 11th hour of the 11th day of the 11th month. And that's why I was there. But thank you for representing us and our city to the people who have made sacrifices, and some of them the ultimate sacrifice.
And I should say, Alderwoman Schmidt really served as the representative speaking on behalf of the city, and she did a fantastic job. It wasn't me. I just stood there and looked pretty.
You just sat there and looked pretty? Oh, that sounds like a recent pop song. Okay. Anything else? All righty. Thank you. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Is that moved?
Moved by Alderman Black. Is there a second?
A second.
Second, a couple of seconds. Second by Alderman Painter. All in favor, signify by saying aye? All in favor of signature by saying "aye"?
Aye.
Adjourned, thank you.
Aye.
Good night.
Bye. Thank you all. Good night.
[inaudible]